Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for joining us tonight for the November 21st, 2022 Stanley County Board of Commissioners Meeting. As I just read reminded me I need to find my glasses. I'm getting to an age where I can't read nothing anymore. Oh, look, that's so much better. I'd like to thank you all for joining us tonight. I'm gonna open up this evening with Commissioner Lane for you have the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Every fellow we come to you tonight seeking wisdom to make the great decisions to better our great county. We also come to give you thanks for all the blessings you have given us all this year. We are coming at the time that our thanks come to be for all of our families and our health. Also, this is the time of the year to give thanks for the birth of your son that gave us life and forgive our sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fer. Fellow commissioners, you've had a chance to look at the agenda. I believe we have some adjustments this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Eifert?
I have a few adjustments to the agenda. Item number six, I would like to remove from the agenda tonight. And I would like to add, under letter I, the Sheriff's Bond. And under letter J, the revised opioid settlement resolution for Wheels Place and Legacy House.
Okay, we have a motion to strike number six and add the Sheriff's Bond to the consent agenda. And the opioid pay for Legacy House and Wheels Place.
Second.
For the public that's just curious, these are all administrative paperwork items. The Sheriff's Bond's gotta get done every year, and this year, you would normally do it at the next meeting, but he has to be sworn in the day before that meeting. We have to have him bonded first. And the other two were just changes in wording to meet a DOJ statute, no changes of substance. We have a motion by Commissioner Eifert. We have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ashudo. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you for that, Commissioner Eifert. The first item on our agenda is usually public comments. We currently do not have anyone signed up for public comments this evening. If there's anyone here that would like to speak during the public comment section, I would ask you to come up now. Otherwise, we will move on. Okay? Seeing nobody, we will move on to item number two, fiscal year 2122 audit presentation. You've gotta make the audit sound fun now. You came prepared for that?
Yeah. Yeah. That's a hard, difficult thing to do. I suppose I have something here. It probably froze up.
Was that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate it. First of all, thank you for having me tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to have done the audit for your June 30th, 2022 fiscal year. We appreciate that. We also appreciate Toby and Melissa and a lot of other staff that without them, we could not do the audit. They gave us the information and answered questions, and that's a necessity to get the audit done. So, we thank them for that. And we commend y'all for having such a good staff. With that, I'm gonna go into our presentation summary. And on, we have, on this presentation, that should be up there, there you go, on page one is, begins a required communication to governance. So, this is just, gives you some summary of the audit and how it went, and any issues or suggestions and that kind of things that were found will be in this. And as I say, it's just a required communication to the governing board. And with some more details and a little few things here, after that letter, we have a bunch of numbers that are within the audit, but these are here just to back up the charts that we're gonna actually talk from. I always say that a picture's worth a thousand words, like we've all heard before. So, we're not gonna read all those letters on those tables that were in those previous pages. So, the first chart that we have is a chart of your analysis of your general fund balance. The general fund balance is not the bank account balance, it's the fund balance, which is like the liabilities, the assets over liabilities, basically. And you have an analysis of fund balance, you have a total fund balance, which is represented in the blue bars. And in those amounts, the total fund balance for 2022 was about 48 million, as opposed to about 25 million in 2018. We've got this five-year trend with most of these charts. So, you can see how the fund balance has increased through those five years. The unavailable fund balance is the total fund balance less what the state has a required, you know, required restrictions. So, the unavailable funds from the state was about $6 million in 2022, and it was about $5 million in 2018. The chart down below that gives a percentage of the general fund, fund balance available as a percentage of the general fund expenditures. And the blue bar represents Stanley County, and you can see that it's 54.94% of the general fund expenditures in 2022, 30.47% of the general fund expenditures in 2018. The red bars are the same data for other counties in a similar population. So, you can see how yours, you know, compares to the state. The 2022 data from the state's not available as of this point, so that's why it doesn't have a red bar all the way to the 22 year. Okay, on this next chart, we have cash balances, that is, the balances that are in your bank accounts, and that's for, by fund. So, you can see the general fund is the largest balance, and you can see that the airport's second, and the third is the other governmental funds. The second chart here is the fund balance that we talked about previously. And so, the general fund is the largest fund balance, and our airport fund is second, and the Stanley County Utility Fund is the third for fund balance. And you can see the dollar amounts down below that second chart, that's the actual amounts. This next chart is about your tax collection percentages. So, you can see that your tax collection percentages is about 98.26% for 2022, 97.59 for 2018, as opposed to the state, 97.77 in 2018, and 98.14 in 2021. Once again, we don't have the 22 data for the state yet. This next chart that we have is a debt analysis, excluding the compensated absences in OPEB and net pension liabilities. And it's based on the governmental versus business-type funds. So, you can see the $16,756,771 is governmental debt, and the $13,125,141 is the business-type debt. So, those are where your debts lie. The next chart we have, we're gonna have a breakdown of your general fund revenue, and this is just by the categories that you see there. And you can see that the adver Laureum tax is your largest category for revenues. The second largest was the local auction sales tax, that's the distributions that comes from the state for the sales tax. And then the third is intergovernmental revenues, which is basically grants, for the most part. Those are the three largest categories of your revenues for the general fund. And then, this chart is similar to the previous one, this is the general fund expenditures. And so, you can see that the public safety is the largest expenditure category, followed by education, and then human services. So, those are the breakdowns of your expenditures for the general fund. Okay, so, the last and not least, I guess, we have some additional required communications. The findings that were there are documented in here, and the descriptions of what that is, is in there. And there was only two. One of them was for the, in the implementation of the GASB-87, which is the new lease procedures and reporting. It's, no county's got them right this year. They just, I mean, no towns either. So, the state was changing the thing as we go. So, although it is a finding, you're not gonna have to respond to the LGC for that one because they know that's what happened. And then we have a second one that's had to do with some meters malfunctioning, and it was a prior period, in a prior period, so we had to do a prior period adjustment on that. And so, that's really all, everything was good. I mean, you had a good audit. And I know that might not have been fun, but it was what it is.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Any questions from Commissioners, Paula? Can we get a motion? To accept the audit? We have a motion by Commissioner Ashudo to accept the audit, as presented, and a second by Commissioner Lawhan. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, for your presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and hope y'all have a good.
You made that as fun as you can make an audit. I mean, you.
Yeah, that's, look, accountants are not necessarily boring, I might be, but we just do boring stuff.
The next item on this evening's agenda, and I meant to go find Ms. Michelle Nance and Reagan Murphy, there you ladies are, good seeing you tonight, the new land use Ms. Murphy and Ms. Nance, I'm sorry, Ms., yeah, Reagan Murphy and Ms. Nance, if y'all wanna come up. We did get your presentation last time, which, by the way, thank you, it was incredibly informative. One of our commissioners who really wanted to get some information about that couldn't be here that night, he has since talked to you guys. I mainly wanted you up here tonight just to answer questions. Is there anything new you'd like to share with us since your last presentation?
There is. We have made just a handful of small changes to the plan based on Commissioner feedback, and we do really appreciate all of y'all taking the time to digest the document and make, you know, really thoughtful comments and suggestions. The only significant changes are on page 71, which is the community-type descriptions. And the only two community-type descriptions that have changed are rural living, that was modified, just to clarify that minor subdivisions of four lots or less are permitted, or are recommended to be permitted, in that community type. So, distinguishing that minor subdivision caps off at four lots. And single-family neighborhoods, there was a small change to that community-type description as well, to clarify that in secondary growth areas, if water and sewer is available, the lot size can be as small as 15,000 square feet, or if water and sewer is to be made available in the next 12 months, otherwise, it's a slightly bigger lot size. So, just meant to really clarify and reflect the intentions of those growth areas. And there are a couple of photos that have been swapped in as well. So, there may be some cameos from additional commissioners in this version of the plan, but the content has not changed too much in that regard.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan.
I have a question, that a 7,500-square-foot lot has been dropped, it's no longer gonna be 7,500-foot lot in the single-family neighborhoods?
Off the top of my head, yes, I believe that's correct. If it's, yeah.
No, I had it in secondary growth area, 7,500 square foot, primary growth.
That's correct. In primary growth areas, I believe, and I'm sorry, I don't have the plan right in front of me, but basically, the nature of the recommendations are that secondary growth areas allow a lower density than the primary growth areas. So, we're allowing that highest density, or we're recommending that the highest density of single-family development be permitted in the primary growth areas.
No, 7,500-square-foot lots, what, 75 by 100 feet?
I believe so, yeah.
That's a very small. If the beach, they even got bigger lots than that. And also, multifamily, you drop some down to 35 by 100-foot lots, that's mobile home lot, squeezing them in. I wish those two were bigger, but we gotta start somewhere.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, and I will note, those are taken directly from Stanley County zoning, and all of those are subject to any amendments that y'all would make to the zoning ordinance. So, the plan itself would not implement any new restrictions in those areas unless y'all made a corresponding update to the zoning ordinance to reflect that.
Probably something we need to look into.
So, if zoning changed, it would override this automatically?
Yes, and this will not override what's currently in your zoning code, exactly.
Mike's got something to work on in January. I'm sorry, Bob.
There's a long list of.
I'll try to let you get through Christmas.
We'll wait till next week.
Anything else from Commissioners on the land use plan?
I'd like to make a motion, we accept it.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to accept the land use plan as presented twice by Commissioner Eifert, I'm sorry, Commissioner Barbie, and a second by Commissioner Ashudo. Any further discussion from Commissioners?
Just to say thank you to the committee that met several times, and to the planning zoning members, and thank you all from the audit for what you did.
Thank you, that was a tremendous amount of work went into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for putting, and all of those, all those public presentations you did, thank you very much.
Yes, it's been a pleasure.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? We have now passed a new 20-year Stanley County Land Use Plan. That's pretty awesome. Next item on the agenda? The public hearing for the Economic Development Incentive Grant. Ms. Lauter, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Come before you this evening on behalf of the Stanley County Economic Development Commission to request your support for an economic development incentive grant totaling 60% of new taxes on new investment for five years for an existing company that's considering expanding their operations here in Stanley County. The company is an e-coding and powder service provider. The project will create approximately 20 new jobs with salaries at or above the county average, and will result in new taxable investments of approximately $3.5 million. And the breakdown of that is 1.1 million in real property and 2.4 million in machinery equipment. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the project, and I appreciate your consideration of the grant request.
Thank you, Ms. Lauter. This item does have a public hearing. Before I do that, do we have any questions from Commissioners?
Just want to do a reminder, you can explain to people that usually when we do these things, the people have to reach certain marks before they get those tax incentives. And then they have to turn in the paperwork every year and all that stuff. So, but at the end of the day, if they're around for 30 years in business, time flies. We get a lot of tax revenue at the end of the day from it.
Yes, sir, they're all performance-based, nothing upfront.
Ms. Candace, if you'll hang out for just a minute.
Also, do they not have to pay their taxes upfront and then get reimbursed, providing that they meet all the criteria?
That's correct. It actually takes several years, usually, for a company delivers the grants, because after the incentive's approved, the investments have to be made. The following year, they're taxed, they've got a period of time to pay them, and then they've got a period of time to turn in their paperwork. So, you know, we're working on grant payments now for grants that were approved in 2019 and '20.
Hang tight for just a minute, Ms. Lauter. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Vice Chairman.
Make a motion to approve an economic incentive equal 60% of the new taxes for five years within a minimum investment of $3.5 million, resulting in the creation of 20 new jobs.
We have a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman Almond, we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Lawhan. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Candace.
Thank you.
Don't go too far. We have an authorizing resolution for the NC Commerce Building Reuse Grant. It's also, Ms. Candace Lauter.
Yes, sir, thank you. You have included in your agenda packets the authorizing resolution that will authorize staff to execute the documents for the application and all the reporting associated with the building reuse grant from NC Commerce. We do have a required match, that is, 5% of the total grant after it's awarded. We do budget funds every year, so there'll be no budget amendment necessary, we'll just simply allocate the funds that are already budgeted to this particular project.
Fellow Commissioners, you've got paperwork in front of you. Do we have a motion? Some of the motions to adopt the resolution as presented by Vice Chairman Almond?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Eifert. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Candace. County Manager Lucas is going to the Opioid Settlement Funding Appropriation Resolution and Community Paramedic Program.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the board have two actual opioid settlement funding appropriation resolutions for you this evening. First is for our community paramedic program. The second will be for URE Harm Reduction, Open Hands. It's actually Open Hands, Doing Business As, URE Harm Reduction Initiative. So, the first one is our community paramedic program. Our community paramedic program was actually started as a result of a HERSA grant that we received in 2019, and the HERSA grant was to deal with the opioid overdose issues that we were faced with in Stanley County. We were actually number one in the state for a period of months, closer to a year, of being the highest overdose state or county in the entire state. So, the HERSA grant actually got our community paramedic program up and running by funding a community paramedic that dealt with post-overdose assistance, recovery assistance. And so, working hand-in-hand with a peer support specialist, which is really critical with that population, having somebody that they can relate to, that's sort of been down that journey of addiction and understands it and can relate. Peer support specialists are folks that have sort of lived that experience and now are in recovery themselves. And so, it's really a sort of a partnership with the peer supporter and the community paramedic, sort of aligning together to provide sort of post-overdose recovery support for folks with opioid misuse disorder. And so, this program has been funded for the last three years with the HERSA grant. The HERSA grant, that million-dollar grant, will be ending on December 31st for this program. And so, we're kindly asking the board tonight to consider the approval of the attached resolution that would provide $137,629 to our county's community paramedic division, and to authorize the creation of one full-time community paramedic position in EMS pay scale grade 250, and one full-time peer support specialist position in county pay scale grade 65. And so, those positions are in place, but with the HERSA grant ending, those positions would terminate, and so, we'll have to reauthorize those positions as well as this funding. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have about this program.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. If you don't have any questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we approve the funding.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ashudo to approve the funding resolution to allocate $137,629 to the paramedic division, and to authorize the creation of one full-time community paramedic position, pay scale grade 250, and one full-time peer support specialist at county pay grade 65. Second by Vice Chairman Almond. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is URE Harm Reduction.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The second item tonight, one of the other programs that's been instrumental in our mitigation of opioid misuse disorder here in Stanley County, has been our partnership through Open Hands of Davidson County, Doing Business As, URE Harm Reduction Initiative. And they provide peer support specialists that work and provide recovery support services, help folks get to treatment, help folks with harm reduction-type initiatives, they provide transportation, they're there for, you know, counseling. These folks are right down in it, living it with these folks every day, trying to help them when they're ready for help, to get back on the road to recovery, and then they're to support them through that recovery journey. Again, this is a program that has been funded with our HERSA funding for the last three years. They're seeking $59,405 to continue that support for the next year. And so, it's kindly requested that the board consider that approval of the authorizing appropriation resolution for that $59,405 for Open Hands, and that funding will be effective January 1st of 2023 through December 31st of 2023. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, County Manager Lucas. Any questions for the county manager?
What's approved of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Make a motion to approve the attached opioid settlement funding appropriation resolution seeking to allocate $59,405 for peer support services via Open Hands in North Carolina, URE Harm Reduction Initiative.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Almond. You have a second? Second by Commissioner. For any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to recognize, there's a lot of things in Stanley County you want to be recognized as number one. Opioid addiction is not one of those. And I certainly appreciate the community paramedic program and the URE Harm Reduction incentive. They went a long way to taking us off of that.
Yeah, it's a, I mean, it's a really, our health department has done an outstanding job of securing those grant funds and really working that partnership with all these community-based organizations. You've funded, you've authorized funding for other ones. One of them was Legacy House down in, that has basically recovery support housing down in Locust. You previously provided some funding for that, I believe $60,000. And then Will's Place, you took action earlier, a couple of months ago, to provide some funding to them for recovery support services that they provide. So, it really, you know, our health department is sort of the overarching sort of community collaborator, convener, and sort of make sure that we're going down that road. We have, we have contracts in place with each of these entities that have specific performance-based metrics included in those contracts. So, that's the one thing we do, you know, these contracts that are 12 months long do, that we have, have things in place to make sure that these folks are being held accountable for doing what they say they're going to do with these funds. And so, and our health department helps to oversee that process. So, it's really, just a really good partnership and kudos to our health department staff that are, have really been the, have spearheaded this effort.
Just want to make a comment. I do appreciate them sending the paperwork to us with their taxes. And, you know, I like the fact that they've increased their budget by almost $20,000 this year. But the percentage of us, of our, our help has went from 30% down to 27% of their operating funds. So, that's, that's in a good direction both ways. I appreciate just talking with y'all, how they've been just good partners with our, with our health department over the last few years.
We do have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say the five by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, County Manager Lucas. That was unbelievably quick. We're at the consent agenda. Look at that. What's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Lawhan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I want y'all to general public to know, I've been trying to get iPads for four years. I'm going to leave. The new commissioner's going to get iPads so we can quit looking at this.
318 pages it was.
It really, times seven of us, 2,100 pages. I think Tyler prepped this just for me and then decided not to be here this week so I could love, I think he could get around. One of the last things we normally do is around the comments by commissioners. And I'm, I normally kind of go end to end, but I'm going to take the prerogative, being the chairman, for the last time to do my comments first. And then I will let those commissioners that are coming off the board speak first. And then we'll end with the rest of you esteemed gentlemen, going to remain here for a while. Now Zach, this is going to take me a minute, but I try to keep it short. So, don't call me at three minutes, all right? You laugh, Ms. Reagan. He did that one night. It absolutely is. I want to start by congratulating some folks. Sheriff Crisco, sir, you did a phenomenal job. You served Stanley County well for four years. And of course, you got re-elected, but just as a taxpayer, as a commissioner, as a person that has had the pleasure to work with you, congratulations on your reelection. That's awesome. There were a lot of great people elected this cycle. They're not all here tonight. Ms. Patty Crump is here. Aunt Trent Hatley, you're back there, sir. Brandon had to run tonight. He had, he had something else at the town council meeting. He might try to make it back before the end. I think that's all that I've seen that are newly elected people, but congratulations to all you guys and thank you. So, my notes, myself and the other commissioners are leaving this board and this county in great shape. New projects continue to grow, county services, and those are in the works. As you just saw, there's cash in the bank, and Stanley County is continuing to look toward a lot of opportunities for a bright future. All in all, I am extremely proud of what my fellow board members and I have accomplished in the last four years that I've been honored to represent Stanley County. When I took this seat the first time in December 2018 as a freshman commissioner, I never had any idea we will be tackling some of the biggest challenges that this county has seen in years. Well, I mean, a pandemic, that was not in the paperwork when I signed up. My biggest concern that first year was learning how to interpret Stanley County financials and desperately trying to absorb County Manager Lucas's 150-page budget. That's just the budget. That's not even the research behind it. That's just the paperwork. You've got 23 departments that all need more funding. You've got 60,000 people that want you to do it but don't raise taxes while doing it. Welcome to county government. And that's what you, new commissioners, Commissioner like Hatley and Ms. Crump and Brandon, that's what you guys are going to face your first 45 days in. It's a challenge. You've got to fund schools better, but you've got to help stop worsening crime. So, you've got to help the sheriff. And sheriff, when you first started, bless your heart. Need new guns, new cars, new radios. Everything that you needed to be a sheriff's department, you guys were in desperate straits for. And that's when I got to learning that everything you do in county government that's worth doing has the word million behind it. I've run a successful business for 20 years. My wife's run a successful business for 20 years. But I tell you one thing, when every major request that comes across your desk ends in the word million, it adds a whole different level of severity to your critical thinking. It makes you really evaluate exactly what it is you're doing. And when you do figure it out, by the way, and you make as many people happy as you possibly can toward the year end, and you get the budget signed, sealed, and delivered, you get about one month before everybody starts clamoring again. So, my counter advice to you new commissioners is enjoy the month of July. That's as quiet as it's going to get all year long. I've sat and thought about what kind of commissioner I've been since I've been here, and I've done some good things. I've done some things that in hindsight I would do differently. Truth is, we have to make decisions all the time with the information in front of us. And sometimes we won't know the outcome of that for months or even years. We just, tonight's a great example. You know, we just laid down a foundation for the land development for Stanley County for the next 20 years. 20 till 2040-something, people are going to be following what we decided tonight and what you folks worked on so hard all year long to make happen. That's going to guide decisions for 20 years. That's awesome. But it's, I mean, it's a lot. And that's, that's what it is to be a community leader. And that got me thinking about leadership. And this is to my fellow future commissioners, Commissioner Lett Crump, Commissioner Lett Hatley, and Commissioner Lett King, who not here right now, but maybe he'll catch this later. Committees that you're going to attend will call you community leaders because it sounds like a nice pat on the back in addition to your title. You'll go places. Oh, you're a community leader. The public will call you leaders without having any understanding of what it means. Most often in a strongly worded email berating you for a decision you just made the day before. 99% of the people that you meet won't have the first idea what your job is, but they'll call you a leader. Nothing about that makes you a leader. It makes you a decision maker, which is an incredibly important thing. It doesn't make you a leader. You don't lead by job description. It's not a title. It's a mantle. And it's one you have to put on intentionally, and it gets heavy sometimes. I come from the mindset where leadership is a thing we learn in the military. It's a very straightforward thing. I've worked in professional teams in my adult life. And leadership means something different there, and it's something more straightforward and easily to be articulated. It means you take charge to accomplish the goals before you, and it means you support your team as you pursue those goals. Do that, and you're a good leader in the normal world. Others may disagree with me, but it has been my experience that being a commissioner does not require any obligation of leadership. Don't gasp, but it's true. You can do this job without being a leader. In fact, there are times you're going to have to. You'll have to follow the other leaders that you'll have to rely on and trust their leadership. Remember that, new commissioners, when you're trying to make relationships with these people and these, this county staff. If I needed someone to be a leader in a financial discussion, I look first to Bill Lawhan. Likewise, if I need a statesman, tend to look to Commissioner Bill Lawhan. Doesn't matter if I was chair, vice chair, just a commissioner. That's the man that embodied those principles the most during my time here. And Commissioner Efer, you have a lot of those same statesman skills yourself. If I needed somebody to be a diplomat, I would look at you, Scott. That was a thing that you're good at. We all know I'm too hot-tempered for that. You have the ability to get things done in a way that can make everyone leave feeling that they got something from it. Commissioner Rashido can crunch statistics as good as I can or better. And he's going to do it whether you want him to or not, by the way. So, I encourage you to lean on him for that ability because that is one thing he's great at. Commissioner Barbie is going to make you earn every single dollar you choose to spend. I absolutely guarantee you, you will not get a costly agenda item accomplished unless you've exhausted every other means first under the sun. But that's a great thing. If I needed political understanding, Vice Chairman Almond has forgotten more than I've learned about that topic. And Commissioner Farr, he's our quiet thinker. He says, he says less on any given day than any of us. But when he speaks, he speaks from a rural, logical, reasonable, reasonable place. He talks to you like a normal person because that's what he is. He doesn't come at you with an agenda. He just says, well, I don't think that's very fair. I don't think we should do that. And that's a great thing. Each of these commissioners I've served with lead in their own way, but all of their skills have been needed. You new commissioners will form a new board with new skills to offer. Just remember to recognize the ones you have at your disposal when you take this dais next month. The ability to lead is not an obligation that comes with this job, but the opportunity for leadership is unequaled in anything else you're likely to do in your life. So, I'll leave you with my thoughts and hope you can build on what I've learned and improve upon it. When you're working with all the fellow departments under your care and Andy's management, keep these things in mind. Understand and expect that no one at all is going to tell you anything your first year except what you want to hear as a commissioner. You're intimidating, and they don't know what your agenda is or why you're asking questions. Maybe you want to help their department. Maybe you're just looking for a reason to cut their budget. They don't know, but they've dealt with commissioners like you in their roles sometimes for 15 or 20 years. And not all of those people delivered on their promises. But offer to help anyway, and be prepared to offer again and again as time goes on and you get to know them. Get in the trenches with your departments during the tough times. Show up, roll up your sleeves, and do the hard work beside them. You earn their respect in a way that cannot be bought. Commissioners don't traditionally do that. It's not the job we signed up for, no. But do it, and do it when others aren't looking, not when there's just a photo op. Give each of the departments your time when they need it, not when it's convenient for you. You will set yourself apart as someone they can count on. Always, always call them back. Every, return every phone call and treat each one like a priest's confessional. Never, ever, ever throw someone under the bus, not in public, not in private. If you do it one time, you will never have the trust of any of your department members again. If they can't talk to you like a human being and can't give you honest feedback and know that it's held sacrosanct, you'll never be able to get an honest, meaningful conversation from them ever. And they're what keep this county government machine operating smoothly. You can't always give them what they want, but if they know they can speak to you honestly, person to person, free of judgment, you'll have a relationship with them you can count on. That helps you get things done. Lean on Andy and our amazing administrative staff. Don't abuse them to do things you can do yourself because they'll do it, and they probably won't say anything about it. But do respect them for their knowledge of this county's people and its departments. We have the most amazing administrative staff I've ever seen in my life. And I'm going out the door, so I have no reason to say that if it's not true, sir. I've been to NC ACC conferences, ACC, whatever, the commissioners' conferences. Y'all have been to them. We've heard the things that, and seen other clerks and managers and what county commissioners have to deal with. We have none of those things. Our guys shine. Thank them for it often and know that we could do much worse than having them in our corner. Keep the public in the know. Most people in Stanley County don't come to these meetings. There's 23 here tonight. There's 65,000 others that aren't. They don't read your agenda, and they don't know what's coming up. So, Commissioners Crump and Hatley and Brandon, use your presence on social media to inform voters and urge them to be part of government. Utilize the press and the radio. They're at your disposal. I've called Charles Curcio hundreds of times over the years. I cringe when he calls me, by the way. My first words, the first words out of my mouth are no comment. But talk to people in plain language and break things down for them. What we read up here in this paperwork, it's complicated, and you get in the habit of speaking League of Lees, and people don't. Normal people don't do that. Take the incredible amount of time that it's going to take to break things down for the public. And they may not agree with the decision that you make, but they'll have a better understanding of why things are happening the way they are. And I've found that to be important. Best of luck to you new commissioners. Andy, Tyler, Jenny, and Krista, thank you for all you do behind the scenes that no one has any idea about and for the things that you do publicly. And my fellow commissioners, it's been an incredible honor serving with all of you these last four years. Thank you so very much for being here, for letting me be here. God bless all of you. That's it for me. Did you time that, Commissioner Almond?
Two and a half minutes.
Hey, you didn't, I'm glad you didn't freak that long away.
Commissioner Farr, I know you don't talk much, but I'm going to you next.
Well, thank you, sir. It has been a pleasure. You have worked with all of you for the last four years, two for some, four for others. I've got to say that I have grown to know people in this county that does a phenomenal job. Andy, Ms. Tyler, Jenny, many more that I can't name them all. But they are doing a job that I never knew was there, but they do it so well and make everything roll in this county. On this next note, I've made a deal with the Elfs to have a Christmas drive-through. And we have a Santa box where if the parents bring their Santa letters, I will see that they get directed to Santa Claus. So, this is going to be on 200 South in Stanfield, about two miles past the railroad track. All they got to do is go straight down 200, and they'll see the Santa. see the signs. They'll have like a 400-foot tunnel they can drive through and just see the display. And when they get to the top, there's gonna be hot cocoa if they want it. And then get out and put their letters in the box and they will be zoomed away to Santa Claus. So with that, I thank you and all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fur. So he retires from government and Santa Claus hired him. All right, fair enough. Vice Chairman Almond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be quick. First of all, I'd just like to thank God for the opportunity that I had to do this. Thank my family, my wife, and the voters of Stanley County. But I was just sitting here thinking I'd be remiss if I didn't mention my grandpa Jerry, Commissioner Josh Morton, and Commissioner Gene McIntyre. They taught me a lot about this stuff. Staff, Andy, Jenny, Tyler, these books don't get put together by themselves. And there's a lot of work that goes into making our meetings flow. And I just appreciate all you guys do. Fellow commissioners, even Peter. I've enjoyed you guys a lot. Trey, you know, he's coming on in my district and wish him the best of luck and Patty and Brandon. And, you know, I thought I knew a lot of stuff when I got on here. But man, you don't know anything until you get going. It's a lot. There's a big learning curve. And the best advice I can give you is do your homework before you get here. Because, well, you don't want to make a fool of yourself. And number two, you'll drag things out. But, you know, being a commissioner in just an hour or two every month, it's hours looking over these packets, making sure you're making the right decisions, looking through the balance sheets and the graphs and so forth. So appreciate it. And thank you, guys.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, there's one thing I would like to ask you. Also, I was gonna tell you, I'm giving chainsaw lessons. If you want to learn how to run a chainsaw.
I see what you did there. Okay.
How to do that.
I'll tell you what, I've never seen anybody in my life that can run a chainsaw at that man right there. Thank you, Commissioner Almond. And I'm gonna jump on the heels of what you said one quick moment and say, yes, I sincerely thank my wife, who is so glad Brandon beat me. Brandon King, I know you're not here, but my wife would like to make you dinner. She's looking forward to no more 8:30, 9:30, 10:30 PM phone calls. And my mom. My mother Brenda has been at just about every single meeting I think I've had. Not all of them, no. But from eight years old in Boy Scouts to 40 years old as commissioner, you've always been here to support me, mom. So I thank you very much. There's Commissioner King, Commissioner Legg King. Ma'am? Commissioner Efer, you're gonna have to hug mom when I'm gone. How about I turn it over to you next? Go ahead, sir.
Thanks, sir. Chairman Jordan, Commissioner Almond, Commissioner Fur, people don't know how hard you guys work for Stanley County. And I personally want to thank each and every one of you guys. You know, we live in a world with Facebook and everything else. And what you see on there is not gospel. You know, we get people trying to get people involved in the land use plan. And you'll get a handful. It's really important because that's you're making decisions for 40 years. And they want to see what you envision. Everybody's not from Stanley County anymore. Growing up in Locust, I knew everybody. And if I didn't know them, I know who they belong to. This county is so diverse now. It's not like that anymore. But I will miss you guys. I will miss our open session meetings that we have. Camaraderie, I guess is a good word for it. It's the cleanest word I could use right now. But, you know, thank you guys so much. I would like for you to remember Tim Swearingen in your prayers. His mom has been airlifted to northeast. And, you know, it doesn't look well. So remember Tim in your prayers. And as we enter the Thanksgiving holiday, we got so much to be thankful for. I'm so thankful for our commissioners up here, Andy, staff, Jenny, Tyler, and all the department heads. You know, they work really hard to make this a great place to live, work, and play. Again, just put your phones down and enjoy your family. Or if you don't enjoy them, just be around and do what you can. You know, we do have so much to be thankful for. And, you know, it's a changing world that we live in. I look forward to the new commissioners coming on. You know, we'll have to learn each other. And but, you know, that's not a bad thing. Even though we know you, we'll see a different side of you. As Tommy said, you know, we'll roll up our sleeves in January and start working on the budget and strategic planning in February. And then you're off to the races. You know, but it's so important. The committees that you'll serve on, you need to be there. We do, we do more than just twice a month, once a month up here. We all responsible for committees that we go to. And that's important. So again, I wish you guys the best. Hope you have a happy Thanksgiving. And I'll see you before Christmas.
And if you don't like your family on Thanksgiving, bring them to my house on Saturday. All right?
Hell, I guess going up, ditoing about everything everybody said. But Commissioner Fur, Mr. Almond, Mr. Jordan, it's been, it's been a pleasure. Good working with you. I know I've been kind of hard headed when it comes to the budget. But I guess I was raised kind of tough. Every dollar counted. So I'm trying to make sure it still counts. You guys have done a great job. Staff has always been great to deal with. I hope everybody has a real nice Thanksgiving and that everything works out well. And we'll catch you a little bit later.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie. Commissioner Shido?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I'll try to make it pretty, pretty quick. I'm gonna merge a couple of things. The land use plan and the audit. Thank y'all for doing the land use plan. One thing added that just a reminder that we are one of seven counties in North Carolina that does not have a parks and recreation program. Combine that with the $50 million we have in the fund balance. $100,000 is .002% of a $50 million fund balance. That could go a long way with partnerships with the other municipalities. So I hope we could keep that in mind and you new guys coming in and the guys who remain in to perhaps work that in the budget again for next year. And secondly, over the weekend, I was at the, you know, the Church of Jesus Christ and Latter Day Saints contacted me because they wanted me to come and speak as the county commissioner along with Martha Sue Hall for Admiral for a 5K they were doing at Franklin's Park for the Stanley Community Christian Ministries. And I asked them why they did that. They had the Regional Church of Jesus Christ and Latter Day Saints. Every year, they do this race to raise money or food or something for a different nonprofit. And they picked the Stanley Community Christian Ministries. I want to give them a thank you because they raised $3,000 to give them to go to a food bank to buy food. They also raised before the race, they had 2,500 food items that was dropped off before the race and during the race, another $2,500. So that was a very good, a very excellent, you know, turnout that they gave for Stanley County. And, you know, and they also asked me to mention on December 3, from 9 to 3, the Church of Jesus Christ and Latter Day Saints are gonna have a Admiral Blood Drive. So if you want to give blood, it'll be good over there to go do that over there. And then also, the Yewery Running Club is having a turkey trot on Thursday. And it's a free run. And they're trying to raise money for the, help raise money for the Stanley Community Christian Ministries. And I just want to tell y'all what I kind of said over there. The Stanley Community Christian Ministries has always been deep to my heart because, you know, a lot of y'all know what, some of y'all don't. My mother was married seven times to five guys. She married the same guy twice, two different times. So she double dipped matron only a couple of times. That's how I got my statistics started, just trying to keep up with her matrimony. And, you know, when some people have tough times when they're between jobs, well, when my mother was between husbands, it was difficult growing up. So, you know, we had the government commodities and stuff like that. And people helped us. But we never went hungry because of volunteers and stuff like this. So as thankful we are, always remember there's some of those who need help. And during COVID and followed up with inflation, there's a lot of people who are hurting out there. The YMCA, they have that. I think it's once a month or a couple of times a month, they have a food delivery serve thing out here. People are rolled all the way around this building to try to get food to eat. So keep others in your, you know, think of others during the holiday. If you could help, it'd be very appreciative if, you know, just to give them your thoughts. And finally, just want to say, enjoyed serving with you guys most of the time. And then a few times. But no, and that's very important to say. Because what I like about serving, what I like about serving on a committee, I mean, a group like this, and like, you know, when me and Bill and Scott served earlier, it's not always unanimous. We went years when the vote was entirely unanimous on here. And now we have commissions where it's not only unanimous. And not only is it not only unanimous, it's different people are splitting off the vote. It's not like the same two or three people are always voting together. So you have people who are actually looking at the issues and making decisions based on the issues. And that's all you can really ask for, for elected officials. And then, you know what? We move on and we go on to the, to the next thing. So I appreciate serving with you guys and stuff. And look forward to working with you guys that are coming on board.
Thank you, Commissioner Shido.